Wednesday, November 19th, regular meeting of the Chicopee School Committee. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In compliance with open meeting law, we are right now recording and live broadcasting this meeting. Is anyone in the audience doing that? Okay? Are there any members of the school committee that are joining us remotely?
I don't see anybody.
The only person that could possibly be is David. Anyone hear from David today? Seeing none, we'll be able to do hand votes for certain items on the agenda. Since everyone is here in person, at this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence, and we'll take that moment of silence for all those in the military and for all those who protect us. Thank you. Sarah, could I please have a roll call of board attendants, please?
Mayor View?
Here.
Ms. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Barcello? Mr. Doubt?
Here.
Mrs. Perret?
Present.
Mrs. Scofield?
Here.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Lamoff?
Here.
Mr. Gerard?
Here.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Mrs. Loebz?
Present.
Dr. McCarthy?
Present.
Eleven present, one absent.
Thank you. Public announcements by committee members. I'll start to my left to the vice chair, Don Lamoff.
I'm all set, Mayor. Thank you.
And Sonny Brooks.
I'm all set. Thank you, Mayor.
And Dr. Mark McCarthy.
Just quickly, you want to acknowledge Thanksgiving holiday coming up, and as I've spent the last year serving on this committee here, I'd like to extend my gratitude to all of you for helping me really feel a sense of community in my time here, and I've never felt more connected to Chicopee in the five years that I've been here, except through starting to forge these relationships. So, thanks a lot, everyone.
Oh, sorry, I had to do that. That was very sweet. Thanks for laughing. Susan Satella Loebz, thank you. No, really, Dr. Mark McCarthy, thank you.
I'd just like to say happy Educational Support Professional ESP Day today to all the ESPs in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. And Doug Gerard.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome all the folks in the audience tonight in the meeting, and I'd also like to wish everybody a safe, happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
And Sandra Perret.
Yes, yesterday at the city council meeting, there was a favorable finance report that the mayor is hereby authorized to acquire 219 and 225 Exchange Street in Chicopee in accordance with the city charter and section 14 of chapter 40 of the Massachusetts general law for the purpose of relocating the school department administrative offices. And the mayor was authorized to negotiate favorable terms for the city and execute and formally document the necessary to facilitate this purchase, which is a wonderful, will be a wonderful asset for the school administration buildings, especially for the parents and caregivers who use public transportation as this new location is on a bus route, and which makes it very convenient for parents. And as for the employees, it's wonderful that the small restaurants and businesses are within walking distance, and we have great little restaurants downtown, the Munich House, Good Works Coffee Shop, Pizzolino, Island Spices, the new Sunrise Suites, Bernardino's Bakery, and there's even a quaint fashion store, Moda Mia. So, it's all sounds wonderful for everyone, the downtown area, as well as the school administrative offices.
Wow, she stole my thunder. Well done. When you're the liaison to the city council, you get all the inside info. Thank you for sharing that, and well done, by the way. Deanna Russo.
Yeah. Earlier in November the 6th, actually, I, along with Grace, Sonny, and Don, and Mayor, you were there too, were able to welcome new Chicopee comp members into the National Honor Society. So, just wanted to extend congratulations to them and those that continue into their senior year as well, and to echo the sentiments of expressing happy Thanksgiving to those who celebrate.
Thank you. And Jay Dow.
Yes, Mayor. I guess all my thunder has also been taken, but I do want to just wish a happy ESP Education Support Professional Day for our paraprofessionals in the classroom. It's no secret that, you know, every job is vital, but we wouldn't be able to keep our classrooms running without their help and support. And also, just want to extend a welcome to Mr. Dahl and the Crossroads Program. I can say wholeheartedly, I look forward to when you guys are here so much, and having you guys here at the meeting to talk to us is something that...I'm going to stop talking because I can't wait to hear from you guys, so welcome.
Wait, the Crossroads Program's here tonight? I didn't...oh, welcome! And Ron Bernard.
All set. Thank you, Mayor.
So, I'd be remiss if I didn't take this moment to wish everyone a happy, healthy Thanksgiving. It really is the season of giving, and if you're able to, you know, I'm sure there'd be many people who are grateful if you could do some giving through the season, because some people are really having a hard time making ends meet. People are living paycheck to paycheck, whether it be some of our families or our older adults or some of our veterans in this community. And I'll tell you, the SNAP benefits being cut really put a burden on not just the food bank of Western Mass, but also all the local pantries, especially Lorraine's Soup Kitchen and Pantry. The shelves went bare, and it was a little scary. It created a lot of anxiety and fear. And if you're able to give, I would encourage you to think about your neighbors, your friends, your families. If you have that ability to share, really, it is the time for giving, so they could use that support. So, thank you. And Thanksgiving morning is a very special homecoming. I call it a family gathering of this community, where Chicopee High will play Chicopee comp in football at Zot Park at 10 o'clock, and I hope to see you all there at the sword game. It's about pride, and it's about community, and it's about homecoming and all those wonderful things. So, I'm hopeful that my peers in the viewing audience, if you're available, I hope to see you at Zot Park on Thanksgiving morning. And on that note, I'll turn it over to Dr. Ware.
Thank you, Mayor, and I have even less more to say. I was going to talk about the sword game, but we will not repeat that. I also would like to just extend a hearty thanks to members of the community who came out to my community meetings. The first one was last night for wards 2, 4, and 5. There are three more coming up, and two before the next set of holidays, before the next break, which one is on Thursday, December 4th, for wards 1 and 8. That'll be a Chicopee comp in the conference room. There are two times you can attend, 9 to 10:30 a.m. or 5:30 to 7 p.m. Thursday, December 16th, wards 3 and 7. That'll be held at Stefanic, and again, same times between 9 and 10:30 a.m. and again, in the evening, 5:30 to 7 p.m. And the last one will be after the list of holidays and to the new year of '26, so Thursday, January 8th, 2026, wards 6 and 9, and that'll be held at the Chicopee Public Schools Abbot Building, which is 134 Dunlong Circle, 9 to 10:30 and 5:30 to 7. I welcome anyone to come. It's definitely a time for you to speak with me without appointment, and so I welcome all community members to take advantage of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Ware. I also want to recognize that we have school committee member-elect Diane Trelle here, so welcome. I know you'll be taking over in January, and it's nice to see you here tonight. We also have Carl Ingram, who is now the CTE Director, Pathways Director. I think I got that. And before we move on to public input, there isn't any, so now I'm going to give this wonderful history of the sword and where it came from. I'm just joking. We're going to get right into this. The Aim Sword Company across the street actually made that sword, so I just wanted to share that point. But I know we're here. There's no public input. We'll move right on to visitors. And we have Eric Dahl from the Crossroads Program and his team from the Crossroads Program. Welcome to the auditorium.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Good evening. My name is Eric Dahl, and I am the Transition Specialist for the Crossroads Transition Program. Our team is dedicated to support young adults as they build independence and prepare for meaning post-school opportunities. But before I introduce my participants, I would like to take a moment on National ESP Day to recognize all the district's educational support professionals for their incredible commitment and care. A very special thank you goes out to my exceptional ESP, Ms. Leana Picard, whose dedication helps make our program what it is today. I couldn't do this without her. I would also like to acknowledge the other ESPs in the Crossroads Program, Ms. Kathy, Ms. Pam, Ms. Tamara, and Ms. Chelsea. I truly appreciate all of them. I am honored to introduce two remarkable young adults who will share their stories, followed by a presentation created by the participants in the Crossroads Program. First, Ms. Emily, followed by Mr. James.
Hello, everyone. My name is Emily, and I'm here today to share a little bit of myself and how far I've come as part of the Crossroads Program. I was born and raised in Puerto Rico until I was about 11 years old. From there, I moved to South Dakota for four years before coming to Chicopee, Massachusetts. I started school at a comp, spent two years there, and then finished my last two years at Chicopee High. As graduation got closer, I knew I wasn't quite ready for the world outside of school. With support from my DDS worker, I advocated to join the Crossroads Transition Program, and I am so glad I did. Since being here, my self-esteem and confidence have grown so much that I'm now able to stand here and speak in front of all of you. I have the opportunity to plan and go outings, and I currently volunteer at Lupa Zoo. I realized it may not be the best fit for me, but I also volunteer in a kindergarten classroom and that I might be where I belong. Mr. Dahl and Ms. Leana are helping me explore becoming an ESP, Education Support Professional. I plan on taking the practice ESP test to see how I do, and who knows, maybe one day I'll be back working in Chicopee. Before joining this program, I wasn't always motivated, even though I wanted to work and be independent. What motivated me most was realizing that my peers see me as a role model. Being able to share my experience with them has helped me grow too. Once I started learning how everything in this program works, I realized I wasn't ready yet, but now I'm getting there. I'm grateful to Mr. Dahl and Ms. Leana for supporting me and preparing me and believing in me. Thanks to the Crossroads Program, I truly feel that by the end of this year, I'll be ready to start working, be independent, and be in my best life.
Hello, everybody. My...four of you do not remember me. I will say my name one more time. My name is James Courtney. I'm going to be aging out of Crossroads. I've been in the program for four years, my time to move on to the real world. Mr. Dahl and Ms. Leana have prepared me, repaired me for this real world I'm going to be entering. They have gotten me work experience, helping me growing as a person, and proper to do proper lawn care. I'm about to make a new chapter for myself, and I just to say, thank them, roads, Chicopee Public Schools, systems, all of you, helping me become the person I am today. Just want to say my last goodbyes to everyone. No, thank you for everything. Also, last thing, stay tuned for more content. Peace. I'm out.
Crossroads, present. School Committee Meeting, Quarter One.
This is Ryan. Quarter One goals: planning, scheduling, and organizing the program and outings, securing job placements.
This is Dominic Mason. Our daily schedule. Our schedule changes daily based upon our job placements and goals, but we do practice a daily hygiene routine and morning rotations. Example of placements: Some of us go to Lupa Zoo, Goodwill, and the College Steps Programs. I go to Goodwill.
This is Deandre. Mondays, morning rotations, shredding, store, apartment, workout, and breakfast club, and library outing, deer, drop everything and read. Monday, Mondays, conducting transactions with a budget in our school, box store, and learning money skills while playing Monopoly. Still, Deandre. Tuesdays, morning rotations, practice social skills, shopping outings, independence curriculum, and yoga mindfulness.
This is Ryan again. Wednesdays, morning rotations, self-advocacy group with Westfield Transition Program, applying self-advocacy skills, independent work on personal IEP goals, objectives.
This is Sierra. Thursdays, morning rotations, community, karaoke, outings, project discovery, small groups, matching an ability, or filling out monk applications, mug appointments, and reviews.
This is Abigail. Fridays, morning rotations, social outings, deep cleaning groups, salsa relations, fun Friday's movies.
This is Izzy. Breakfast Club. A couple of us take turns preparing breakfast each day. We are responsible for setting the table, serving breakfast, and cleaning up after the meal, doing the dishes, sweeping, mopping, and wiping the tables and chairs.
This is Dominic again. Crossroads Cafe. We work hard creating breakfast menus, shopping for ingredients, prepping ingredients, cooking, organizing ingredients, and delivering the orders to faculty and staff at Fairview Elementary School. We also do all the cleanup independently.
This is Olivia. Fourth Annual Crossroads Cafe After Dark, social family event, fundraising with our award-winning chili.
Hi, Emily here. Social outings with other area transition programs, karaoke on the go, our new traveling karaoke service. We travel to other transition programs to sing, dance, and socialize. Stanley Park, end-of-year transition picnic, monthly bowling outings, social movie outings.
My name is Cameron Hines. I'm 21 years old. Community outings, applying grocery shopping and budgeting skills at Big Y, weekly outings, Fairview, public library, applying budgeting and social skills at local restaurants, PVTA, travel training.
I'd like to make a motion that we take a five-minute recess, so we have an opportunity to congratulate the kids personally.
We have a motion for a five-minute recess. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We'll see you back in five minutes. It means no worries.
Back to order the regular meeting of the Chicopee School Committee, and we're on visitors and visitors. Ms. Jennifer Belleville, graduation requirements, competency determination.
Good evening. I don't know how I follow that. Ms. Cruiser told me I was supposed to come up and break into song, but I don't think any of you would really want to hear me sing.
Heard you're good.
So tonight, I'm here to talk about graduations and competency determination. As you know, we're in the second reading of two new policies. So just to kind of give you a timeline of where we are from the state perspective. So in 2024, 2025, we had the passing of question two, which then changed our competency requirements as we could no longer use MCAS for them. So at that time last year, we spent a lot of time updating our policy on competency determination and our current graduation requirements. With that, we did make some changes for graduation around mathematics, around number of credits for our current freshmen. And at that time, competency determination, the state really focused on some core classes: English one, English two, Algebra one, Geometry, as well as one of the sciences, Biology, Physics, or Chemistry, for making sure that they were equivalent to what was being tested from MCAS. Then, in July, we received new guidance from the state, and we were told that two policies were needed. We needed a graduation policy separate from our competency determination, and our policy currently had one. And that we needed to submit it to the state by December 31st of this year. With that, there were a lot of requirements when it came to competency determination and what was needed in our policy. And we did use a template from the School Committees Association in writing our current policy. But what's next? So if you don't know, in late September, the Governor's Office released the Vision of a Graduate. It's the aspirational outline of how a Massachusetts high school diploma can prepare students, regardless of their zip code, their identity, or their background, for success after graduation. The Governor made it very clear that this was just the first step to create a new statewide graduation standard to ensure that all students leave high school equipped with the skills to succeed whether they're in college, career, or civic life. They are looking, on top of releasing the vision of a graduate, with coming out with statewide graduation requirements. Massachusetts is one of the very few states that does not have a consistent statewide graduation requirement. We have a lot of local control around what our graduation requirements are. We will see a proposal for that coming out from the Governor's Office and the Department of Secondary and Elementary Education, probably at the beginning of next, in January, at the start of the new school year, along with a proposal for the roadmap. I know that we were recently with the Commissioner, and we asked the Commissioner around world language. And the Commissioner made it very clear that one of his goals is to make world language part of graduation requirements. That will have significant impact on our middle schools as well as our high schools. And so we're looking at how we're going to go about the planning of that. So I think that you will see me again. You know, not that you don't want to see me every year talk about the same thing, but I think this is something that is going to continue to evolve and something we're going to have to continue to do work on. So with that, I also just really want to say a thank you to Christina Pina and to Becky Bouchard, who are instrumental in working on these policies with us and really kind of delving into what they meant and where we are going. So the graduation requirements, this has not changed from when we did our policy last year. But just a highlight for you, we did up the math requirement to four years, starting with our current freshman. So they need to do four years of mathematics. That's very common, and it is recommended for a lot of higher ed institutions that a four-year graduation of mathematics is required. We also just cleaned up our language around physical education and health as those are state law requirements. Students are supposed to be taking physical education every single year as well as they're required to take one health course. And then our electives. So our current juniors, seniors, and sophomores have 110 graduation requirements. And our current freshmen and all students coming beyond will have 120. That is in our current policy, and the recommendation is to continue that. With that, in our previous policy, we had put that starting, that students still needed to take the MCAS, that though it's not a requirement to pass the MCAS, as we know, accountability is still very real for school systems, and we do need 95% participation from an accountability standpoint of students sitting and taking it. MCAS is still also very important for students who are looking for John and Abigail Adams scholarships and for other purposes. The SEAL of Biliteracy is looking to get tied to the MCAS as well. So we, it was in our competency determination part of our old policy. We're asking to move it to the graduation requirements that students, starting with the class of 2027, at least are taking the MCAS. They're not required to pass it. So the new competency determination, what we needed to do was write a policy that covered all the subjects previously covered by MCAS. So that's English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science, as well as, starting with the graduating class of 2027, they needed to demonstrate competency as described with US history. There are two parts of this policy. There's the idea of demonstrating mastery as well as satisfactory coursework. So satisfactory coursework, meaning we're passing our class. Demonstrating mastery of skills, we got a little stuck on, I'm going to be honest, because what does that mean? And so what we needed is, we need a policy. And now we then need to do kind of the heavy lifting and the hard work of really defining what that mastery of skills is. Right now, it's different for different teachers as part of the course completion. But we do look as a district, hope to standardize that a little bit. Our new policy also really had to talk about students with disabilities. One big thing that is a big change is students with disabilities who have been placed out of the district. Their placements must meet our local district requirements of the competency determination policy. So Sarah Marion will need to be doing a lot of work with our out-of-district placements around because our requirements may be different than, say, a Hoyoke's requirement or a Springfield's requirement. They'll be similar in some fashion, but there could be some changes. So students who are out of district do need to meet our current Chicopee standards. As well as, we needed to look at English language learners and determine if their coursework appropriately aligns with what we are looking at for competency determination. In the policy that's being proposed to you, there are many more courses listed. Last year, we were told really to focus on English one, English two, Algebra, Geometry, Physics, Biology, Chemistry. The state took what was reported and then kind of gave us guidance around all of the courses that could cover what those competencies looked like. So it actually broadened things for a lot of our students, which will help them meet competency determination. We did have to put a piece in about students who are transferring late or enrolling. One of the things that we wanted to keep is, is say you're in Hoyoke, and after your sophomore year, you meet competency determination in Hoyoke. We didn't want you to come to Chicopee and then have to have a whole new set of standards that if they had met it somewhere else in Massachusetts, we would accept that. As well as that there's an appeals office through my office, as well as it really outlines that the students from 2003 to 2024 can continue to appeal to get their high school diploma. And we still do receive some of those through my office. We probably received three more this year, but they kind of trickle in. And on a case-by-case basis, we review them to see if they're eligible for a high school diploma. Any questions?
Grace.
Thank you for all the legwork and the report and the hours put into this. I appreciate it. I have two questions. One, you mentioned out-of-district placements. So all the students that we presently have out of district, will we have to reconsider if they don't meet? Do they already meet our requirements?
Not all of them. So as Sarah Marion has her meetings, she looks at transcripts, and she looks to see if they're meeting our current graduation requirements and what we say for competency determination. And she'll be going by case-by-case basis. Interestingly, when this went into effect as of December 31st, the Commissioner was very clear that it went into effect for even our current seniors. And that was a big concern for all of us of that, how could something go into effect and affect our current seniors? However, the language allowed for us to be a little bit more broad with the courses that we would accept to show competency and say, "English" or "Mathematics." So it didn't actually penalize any of our students. It actually helped a few of our students, which was really good.
Okay. Thank you. And my other question was, I know that in, I was just reading stuff, Quincy, Melrose, Danvers, Belmont, Dedham, Natick, you know, all those east, they have a requirement graduation for community service.
Yes, they do.
I was wondering, was that considered or?
I think it should be something that eventually, as we follow what's going on in the civics world and the civics MCAS, I would think that something would be coming out from the state. I think that right now, it's not something we have currently in our program of studies. It's something that we could definitely entertain, but it would take a while to build into it. I know that the Student Advisory Group talked about having a SEAL. So there is a program where if they're doing a certain number of hours, they are getting a SEAL on their diploma for community service. But right now, it's not currently a requirement. With that requirement, you would have to allow access for everyone to do it. And what would that look like? But it's definitely something that we can discuss further.
Well, I feel that that's important since, you know, we talk about creating communities and how important community is. And so I'm glad that you considered it. Thanks.
Dr. Mark McCarthy.
Thanks, Grace. I like the idea of the community service as well. Thank you for the presentation. Can you just clarify for me again? So our graduation requirements are the credit numbers? And then the competency requirement was that next slide with the two bullet points?
So they're two separate things. So we have our graduation requirement, which is you have to take a certain number of courses with a certain number of credits every single year. Part of your graduate, to be able to graduate, you have to meet competency determination. And that competency determination is basically stating that you've mastered the Massachusetts frameworks through what used to be considered tested by MCAS, which was up to your sophomore year of English, Algebra, Geometry, Physics, Biology, Chemistry, one of the sciences.
And those two bullets, demonstration of mastery and course completion?
Yes.
Was that an and or an or?
No, it's an and. And I think that's where, so Becky Bouchard will tell you that I struggled with this, something fierce, and probably lost a lot of sleep over that, is what does that actually look like? And so I think we're still figuring out what that actually looks like and how we're going to be doing all of that work. However, first step is, we need a policy. And then we need to work on the implementation and really what it looks like for us here in Chicopee.
All right. Thank you. Just wanted some clarity on this.
Ron Bernard. Susan, you're next. Ron.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions that I noticed. You know, math and English, we've gone to 20 credits required. And I was just noticing, science, I took a little note that we're still at 15. So are we looking, I guess I'll give you a couple of questions, if that's okay, all at once. So I don't forget my questions, I guess. To look at, go to 20 at some point, seeing that, you know, does that compare to other districts in the country? And obviously?
So in the Commonwealth, it does. So the Commonwealth, and I believe it was in 2003, and then I believe they So the Commonwealth in, I believe it was in 2003, and then I believe they revised it around 2018, have what they consider mass core requirements. And mass core requirements are basically what they think is the best as far as preparing students for college career and beyond. And their requirements are four years of mathematics, four years of English, but only three years of science and three years of social studies. Some of that has to do with, there's only so much time in the day, but the math and the ELA ones are big. In our, in the current mass core recommendations is also where you see world language, and that's why it's not a shock to us that we'll most likely see it when we see statewide graduation requirements.
Okay. Thank you. I just, you know, I just, the concern I had is that, you know, you watch the news, you see the stories, and you learn about the education, how, you know, we have a declivity drop here in the United States, so we're behind most countries and around the world, especially in science, math, English. So that was my questioning. I didn't know if it was possible to add more of that so we can catch up. I don't know.
I will tell you most-
That's the only reason I threw that out there.
No, a lot of students do take four years of science. It is very common to take four years of science for many, many of our students.
Hi. Thank you.
And Susan.
Thank you. Are our parents, our grandparents and caregivers able to still, like when I was going to school, opt out of taking a certain class such as health?
So opt out, no, that we would have to provide an alternative. So if they struggled with something in the curriculum specifically for whatever, some belief or a specific reason, they have the right to come, they have the right to come and preview our curriculum, as well as we would provide them an alternative assignment.
My parents did not want any of their seven children to take a health class. So we all took an alternative class, I believe a phys ed class. Are they still, parents still able to do that?
So every once in a while, we do get people who ask to opt out. We do have students who opt out of some of our physical education requirements. You know, the pool, the pool can be tough for some students and things like that. So we do provide alternatives to them.
Okay, great. And U.S. history, that's now going to be a requirement?
It is. It has always been a graduation requirement, so it's really not a huge change. It's just going to become part of competency determination as well.
Good to hear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Don Lamont.
With the changes that are, with the changes that are coming from the state, how's it going to affect our career tech students? I know in the past, we've had a hard time getting enough classes so that they can be competent in their, in their trades.
Correct. And so currently, even under mass core, CTE follows a different requirement. And so with that, we have some students who have, if we can count them as mass core, even though they don't take a world language now, because they can't put it in their schedule as a CTE. CTE has different standards, and we do try to find many alternatives, especially around PE. Sometimes that is challenging to get in with the trades, but we've been working really hard, and Mr. Ingram and Mr. Lamont and Mr. Ryan, as far as scheduling, do a really nice job as far as figuring out our schedule and making sure our students can hit those requirements.
So what I'm hearing is there's a different requirement for career tech.
There are. So career tech, yes, career tech allows for flexibility around those requirements.
So do we have to memorialize that in our policy?
You don't actually at this time. I believe when the state comes out with their standards, so if I went on to CTE, it tells me what is acceptable as far as for mass core. Mass core isn't a state requirement at this time, but it does get reported whether our students actually meet those requirements or not. When we come out, when the state comes out with graduation requirements that we're going to see statewide, I believe they will come out with CTE graduation requirements and what are the exemptions as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the school committee? Thank you, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you.
We'll move on to approval of minutes 25-11-7.
Move that the minutes of the regular meeting of the school committee held on November 5th, 2025 be approved.
Don, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the minutes. Any comment, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Reports 25-11-08.
Personnel action taken and professional development. I'd like to call Ms. Deb Green up to the podium for an update.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight's personnel report covers the period from October 23rd through November 12th. There was a total of 14 new hires and nine resignations. One of those new hires is in Unit A. Two of those are in Unit E. We added five to our substitute pools, four in the cafeteria, a family and community engagement liaison, and a crossing guard. As of this afternoon, we have 41 active postings on Power School. Fifteen of those are in Unit A, six of them in special education. Eight of those openings are in Unit E, six of those are in special education. We also have a vice principal opening, long-term substitutes, food service, another family and school engagement liaison, and two assistant coach positions, boys' basketball at Chicopee High and girls' basketball at Chicopee Comp. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Report on before and after-school program leases.
Oh, did we, I'm sorry, did we have personal, professional development that you wanted to share?
Sure. The end of October and through November, we have 19 various Chicopee Public School personnel attending 13 different programs, and some of the titles are the MASC, MASSS 2025 Annual Conference, SOS for School Staff, Gatekeeper Training, the DESI Building Capacity for Farm-to-School, Class-on-Task Behavioral Analysis in Schools, Project Wild and Aquatic Wild, the Elementary IEP Team Leader Community, Behavioral Change in Schools, Aligning Standards to Learning with Assessment in Physical Education, a One Goal Partnership Summit, and a Mass November Champion Day, and Massachusetts Dyslexia Institute. So some various excellent programs that all contribute to the goals that we have for our Chicopee Public School System and our strategic plan for schools, so.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? We'll move on to 25-11-09. Report.
Report on before and after-school program leases. I'd like to pass the, like, to Ms. Cruiser of Student Supports.
With the, in the first quarter, I was getting a copy of the program, and I saw it in Bo yesterday. Sorry, thought it was. Sorry about that. So coming to the end of quarter one, I did update the rosters from Playful Minds and from the Taekwondo at Bo. One Strong Community is still working. They just got their license, so they're still working on getting updated. So I was able to go yesterday to Bo and for the Center of Martial Arts and look at their roster compared to what they gave me, and also look at how the program's going. I also talked to the new principal, Ms. Roman Davis, and says that the program is doing very well. So we're, they're still, you know, they're still staying, most of the programs are still staying under 20 at this moment. One Strong Community is still working on getting people, and he's putting a lot of effort out there to get people to sign up for Fairview. And the Center for Martial Arts is at the top tier, and they were doing a lot of different activities, dance, martial arts, and it was really nice to see. And the principal at Bo was saying everything was going really well.
Okay. Thank you. Jay Dow.
Yes, I just want to say thank you very much for the follow-up on this report. I know that I have been a big person in asking for some updates in this, and, you know, I truly appreciate the reports and making sure that, again, you know, in full clarity that we're charging the prices that we say we're charging. Looks like everything is in line, and I'm very happy to see that. So thank you for the reports and the work that you're doing to make sure that that's accurate, Ms. Cruiser.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? 25-11-10.
Move that the second reading of the following policies from the October 22nd, 2025 Policy Subcommittee be approved. A, graduation policy, IKF. B, competency determination, IKFE.
Sunny, can I get a motion?
A motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the second reading of the following policies. Any discussion? Defer to anyone or? Any comments?
I got my questions answered by Mrs. Belleville when she was at the mic going over the details. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take a roll call. Oh, someone have a question or comment? Jay.
I was just going to say that I realize, obviously, you know, we made these changes. We made changes not too long ago based off of guidelines, but I do just want to say that I do think that at some point, you know, I definitely support the idea of at some point adding in community service into our graduation requirements. Not something that needs to happen right now, but as we continue, as these continue to evolve, it's definitely a great conversation to have, and I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Dr. Mark McCarthy.
I just want to prepare you that there's going to be different announcements coming from different levels and possibly legal challenges, so this conversation will be ongoing.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments? We'll take a roll call.
Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Dow?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamont?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
11 yes.
Motion carries 25-11-11.
Move that the bills warrant S. 110725 totaling $2,26,757 and 21 cents be approved.
Dr. Mark, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Jay, could you read the warrants into the official record, please?
Absolutely. So this evening, we'll be voting on two warrants. I will read the totals of the two warrants combined into the records, and then we'll vote on those warrants individually. For athletics, $28,667. Food services, $315,247. General expenses, $310,641. Grants, $197,109. Maintenance, $249,591. Reimbursements, $1,037. Special education, $265,680. Student activities, $1,622. Transportation, $1,149,175. Telecommunications, $5,205. Sales tax, $1,266. For a grand total of the two warrants this evening totaling $2,525,244.
Thank you, Jay. Any discussion on the first warrant? That's warrant S. 110725 totaling $2,26,757 and 21 cents. Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Dow?
Abstained.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamont?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
10 yes, one abstained.
Motion carries 25-11-12.
Move that the bills warrant S. 111425 totaling $498,486 and 83 cents be approved.
Susan, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Any discussion on the second warrant? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Dow?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamont?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
11 yes.
Motion carries 25-11-13.
Move that the memorandum of agreement July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028 between the Chicopee School Committee and the Chicopee Education Association, Unit A be approved.
Grace, can I get a motion?
It is with great enthusiasm that I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Chicopee School Committee and the Chicopee Education Association, Unit A. Any discussion or comments? Jay.
I just want to say, I know it was a long road to get here. I'm very grateful to the work from both our bargaining team as well as the CEA. I'm glad to hear that we're reaching a resolution and happy to be moving forward.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments? We'll take a roll call.
Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Dow?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamont?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
11 yes.
Motion carries unanimously 25-11-14.
Move that the memorandum of agreement July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028 between the Chicopee School Committee and the Chicopee Education Association, Unit B be approved.
Doug, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Chicopee School Committee and the Chicopee Education Association, Unit B. Any discussion or comments? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Dow?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamont?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
11 yes.
Motion carries unanimously 25-11-15.
Move that the memorandum of agreement July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028 between the Chicopee School Committee and the Chicopee Education Association, Unit E be approved.
Sandra, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Chicopee School Committee and the Chicopee Education Association, Unit E. Any discussion or comments? Don.
Memorialized in this contract will be a title change for the paraprofessionals. They'll now be called ESPs, Education Support Professionals, and we're going to all have to get used to using that title. Thank you.
Any other? Sunny.
I would, I would just like to say thank you to my colleagues, the superintendent, all those involved in the last year plus negotiating three contracts at the same time. At times, it was tiring. At times, it was invigorating. And somehow, we were making it across the finish line with the Education Association. So thank you to all who participated.
Thank you, Sunny. Any other comments or discussion? I'll just say that if you're down with ESP, then you know me. Because that's the new name for our parish, so quite excited about that. We'll take a roll call.
Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Dow?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamont?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
11 yes.
Motion carries 25-11-16.
Move that the new job description for the Deputy Superintendent for Academics be approved.
And Deanna, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Deanna, motion to approve. Any discussion? Any comments? Don.[1706.30]
Move that the new job description for the Deputy Superintendent for Academics be approved.
And Deanna, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Deanna, a motion to approve. Any discussion? Any comments? Don.
With this new job description, there was memorialized that she'll now be considered the second person in charge. So that when the superintendent's out of the district, we have a direct line to the next person in charge. So that means we'll have one or the other in the district at most times. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments? We'll take a roll. Comment? Oh, roll call.
Dr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Dow?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamothe?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
11 yes.
Motion carries unanimously. 25-11-17.